Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board. Sorry for the delay. You'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, a republic which is standing, standing one nation, under God, in the name of our God.
Thank you. Any changes to the agenda?
No, Chairman, there are not.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Has everyone had the chance to look over the minutes?
Yes.
Are there any changes? I will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes.
Make a motion to adopt the December minutes?
Second?
Second.
All right. 10 seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. If we could go, we don't have any, we have a presentation later, so no presentations now. With the work session, if anyone would like to make comments now during the public comment period, you would have three minutes to comment on the TOD plan. Or if you would like, we can have our discussion and we can have a brief period of time, you could comment after that. I know we have two people that have signed up, so I don't know. It's not a real formal session, so there isn't a specific public comment within that session, but it would be good to do that if anyone wants to. Nothing now? If someone would like to comment now?
Yeah.
Okay. Sure. Can you just go up to the microphone and state your name and address, please?
Hello? Yeah. Hi, everyone. My name is Garangala. I am a developer, entrepreneur, and small business owner here in North Carolina. Grew up here my whole life. Family immigrated from India when I was five years old with $100. True American story. I've lived up here, and I lived in Morrisville since 2015, but we moved to West Cary, literally across the street, down the street, because there was not enough housing at that time in Morrisville for a new home in our growing family. And we have gone through the development process in the town of Cary. This will be our first time doing it here in the town of Morrisville. And I'm a big fan of the new TOD zoning because I believe we need more residential in the area, because it will actually create less traffic congestion, I think, because more people will walk, use other modes of transportation, which you see in other high-trafficed areas. I used to have an office in North Hills, and a lot of the people that live there and in those areas would just walk everywhere, and they would rarely get in their cars except for maybe on the weekends or if they were going out of town. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak before we move on? Seeing none, we will proceed with the sign plan for Wake Tech.
I will be presenting item 2023-27-0. This is proposed master sign plan for Wake Tech, the RTP campus on Chapel Hill Road. Address of the site is actually 433 Knowledge Drive. Just a small bit of background for everyone. Back in July 2022, Town Council approved a tax amendment to the UDO allowing sites of 25 acres or more, or 400,000 square feet or more of building floor area, to apply for a master sign plan for their site. Wake Tech RTP Campus consists of approximately 89.61 acres and will exceed the minimum requirement to apply. These sign plans are primarily to accommodate these larger sites like Wake Tech when the UDO standards aren't really sufficient to meet their needs. Here are the overall proposed quantities for each sign type. As we'll see later in the presentation, there is some language to amend these for future development, future buildings, but this is what they are proposing currently for the two existing buildings and the parking areas. The applicant is proposing two of these Type A monument signs. The sign face that they're proposing, it will be 44 square feet. Currently, the UDO allows for 32 square feet for monument signs. And I'll just brief through each type, and we can come back and address any of them at the end if you'd like. Located here at these entrances to the site. They're also proposing one of these Type B ground signs. They are proposing 25 square feet. Again, the UDO allows currently 16 square feet for just a typical Type B ground sign. This will be just a directional sign. They are proposing eight of the Type C ground signs, five of what they're calling Type One, which will be indicating different departments in each building, three of what they're calling Type Two, which is just generic kind of pedestrian directional signage for the site in general to each building. Oh, and the sign faces on Type C do not exceed the current six feet, square feet allowed in UDO. The applicant is also proposing five of these Type Three parking location signs. These are not currently covered in the UDO, so these would be unique to the Wake Tech site with potential changes in the future with just overall UDO tax amendment changes. Language in this slide is slightly misleading. Wake Tech is, they're not asking necessarily for two additional wall-mounted facial signs for this building, for Building One. They are asking for building indicators similar to what's shown here for Building Two, where it shows Building Two and then the actual address. Currently, on Building One, it just has the address and not Building One. And this would also apply to future buildings as well. Referring to that future signage, the applicant has added the following notes for potential amendments, as I mentioned earlier. They've indicated some maximum parameters for the future developments. One monument sign per campus entrance, one of the Type B directional signs that we saw earlier per 10 acres of the property, one of the Type One building department signs per building, and two of the Type Two pedestrian directional signs, two of the Type Three parking locations per parking area, and two of the building name and address signs per building, similar to what's on Building Two currently. The applicant has also, and I apologize, there's supposed to be a two there. The applicant has also indicated that dimensions and sign faces face areas that for future signage will not exceed what's shown here, so these would be the maximum allowed. Staff recommends approval of the master site plan application for the following reasons. Application complies with the stated purpose of regulations in UDO Section 5.16.1A. Request does not include any prohibited signs as identified in UDO Sections 5.16.2D, 5.16.2E, and 5.16.2F. The application does not include any temporary signage. The application is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the application does not conflict with any other provisions of the UDO or Morrisville Code of Ordinances. The ordinance language for the board's motion, the board is asked to either recommend approval to Town Council if the sign plan is presented, recommend approval with changes, or recommend denial. And that is all I have, and I'm available for questions. We also have a representative for Wake Tech here, if you have any questions for him as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. So, do we have any comments or questions? Tim? Josh? Chris?
No, I thought it was very detailed. It was good.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, I agree. I mean, I was reading it over earlier. I mean, you know, I guess it does make sense to have a little more signage, because this could easily be multiple properties, and they would get more signs based on the UDO, so, yeah.
Yeah. As it reads currently, the UDO is kind of a one-size-fits-all.
Right.
And these larger sites, like I mentioned, they're going to have future buildings, you know, more students potentially, so it makes sense for these larger sites.
Right. Thanks. So then, if anyone has any or no objection, if we have a motion?
Make a motion? I'd make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-27-0 of the Morrisville Town Council approving a master sign plan for the Wake Tech Technical, Wake Technical Community College RTP Campus located at 433 Knowledge Drive, MSP-22-1.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, for the work session, we're going to collaborate around the table down here. We'll bring the microphones, so hopefully everyone can hear us as we sort of go through everything, and then we can all check the presentation together. So if you could just give us a brief minute, we will head down to the table. Thank you.
I'll probably sit over there, I guess I can see. Yeah, maybe. Sit them, you know, I mean. Yeah. That one. Did you guys have any paper?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you mind if I sit there?
Yeah, whatever you think, if you can see that will probably be the best.
Okay.
Brooke, if you cannot hear us, let us know.
All right. Well, so thanks, thanks for giving us an opportunity to present where we're at. We're at about a halfway point in terms of developing some of the content for both the design, the visualization side of what we're doing, and then also starting to explore what some of the regulations may need to be, more so what the diagrams would need to be, what the supporting illustrations would need to be. So that's what we've been working on, and that's what we want to talk about tonight. I will say, and I'm sure everybody had a chance to review a lot of slides, we're going to move through a lot of content, and as we go through this, I have some checkpoints, but if you have questions, certainly let me know. Feel free to stop me. But I want to go through a couple of things first before we dive into the actual site plan development and the design principles. Just a quick project update, where we're at, what we've been working on. I want to talk a little bit about the study area considerations, because they're fairly substantial in terms of why we're doing what we're doing, what some of the initial thoughts were, where some of the other planning concepts came from, that type of thing. And then we'll get into the actual site plan development and design principles. So, real quick, just a project update. For those, for those maybe in the audience that aren't aware, this project was broken up into two phases, and we're in Phase One, working on the design typology. This will be a little bit more clear. We're in Phase One. We've completed the kickoff and the upfront engagement. We continue to have conversations with developers, stakeholders, we're reaching out to the DOT, Go Triangle, any other partners that we think have a good handle or experience on what we're trying to accomplish here, just to make sure we're getting as much feedback as we can. It's been good checkpoints. One of the last things I want to do when we're done here is just talk about the input that we've received from some of the developers that we've talked to. But we're in this design typology toolkit and TOD redevelopment plan and visualizations. The next deliverable, so next time you see us, we're going to be showing this, this big visualization of what these TOD areas could look like. And as we go through this exercise, I think it's really important to remember, that is just one version of 50 different ways this area could redevelop. We're just trying to sort of check some boxes on, does this accomplish your goals? Does this accomplish the town's goals, the objectives for this space? And if it does, if that visualization does, we're going to use that to sort of back into regulations and back into design principles that we want to make sure, regardless of what the final design actually is when this gets built, that it adheres to some of these design principles and these regulations. So that's ultimately the goal. I'll talk a little bit about more, more about that when we get to the end here. Study area considerations. I think we talked a little bit about this last time I was here, but I still think it's important to go over. So we have these three TOD areas. So the TOD itself is a pretty large area right here in the center of town. There's TOD East, TOD West, TOD South. I think a little bit closer view is helpful. Starting to break out, you can see the parcels that we're dealing with. There's a map later on that shows that in a little bit more detail. So we got TOD East, which currently there's a proposal for this Longfellow Discovery at Watkins, so that's a big chunk of this TOD East space. And we have TOD West and TOD South. Just in terms of what the redevelopment opportunities are, and this is, this is a generalization, a generalization of the space, but just to give you an idea of what we're, what we're looking at. On TOD East, if this proposed Longfellow Discovery at Watkins goes through, it's, it's taken a substantial amount of space offline for the TOD area, so what's the rest of that look like? So even though that overall area is about 71 acres, we're looking at a developable area of about 27 acres. For TOD East, the entire area itself is 47.6 acres roughly. Developable area with, with us kind of removing the McCrimmon flyover is about 30, 30 acres on the north side of where the flyover is going to come through, and then there's this leftover space on the south side, about five acres. And then TOD South, you know, 40, 47.4 acres, you have about 47 acres of developable space. All that's really going to come out of that are some potential easements for roads, but everything else is very much an opportunity for redevelopment. So just some considerations when we start to think about what's developable and what's not. High level, some planning influences that have guided some of the decisions that we're making. You know, on the west side, you have the Morrisville Cricket Pitch. You have some improvements that are already going to, well, planned improvements that are already coming online over the next couple of months or over the next year. On the, on the TOD West side, obviously the McCrimmon flyover, it's going to have some substantial improvements to the site. It's going to change some of the orientation of the roads and access points, so it puts a lot on Church to handle, so that's something that we're thinking about as we start to plan for TOD West. Kind of the same thing for TOD South. This intersection in McCrimmon Parkway and Church becomes a fairly substantial intersection, so as we start to feed people to the north and to the south, those will be your primary access points into the TOD West and TOD South area. Go Triangle has identified this is the potential location for BRT, also for a transit station in the future. So we're setting aside this area and planning for this area to be where those transit locations would need to be, so setting aside space for both the transit station but also the required parking that would come along with it. We also have been exploring using this, this sort of leftover space south of the McCrimmon flyover as an area that could have a transit station. It might be tight. There's some benefits to it being there. It opens up development opportunities in a bigger way up here, you know, but it also, this might be too severed with some of the embankment or the grade changes that are coming with this flyover. So it's something that we'll keep exploring. I think when we see it in 3D or when we start to take in some of the topography challenges and access challenges, we'll have a better understanding if that's a viable solution or not. I think the rest of this is stuff that we've talked about. You can see this potential BRT route that's coming through, so that's the red line, and then the green and sort of cyan blue is where the commuter rail line corridor would be. Any questions about this planning influences diagram? Otherwise, I'm going to move on.
One quick question. So there's the little green dotted line that's sort of parallel to the, I mean, you have, I see the trail.
Yep.
What is the smaller green dot? Is that just smaller trails, access, like sidewalk? Like, it might go under that flyover?
Yeah, so our, our thought, and that's, that is something to be explored. I mean, there's some challenges. I know we've talked about this with staff a couple times. You, in, in your bike and ped plane, you show this is a potential connection point for, and that's what the heavier dash line is, that's the, maybe the more obvious location to connect you up to this intersection. We also see an opportunity to sort of loop this around and run the rail, and if you could, it'd be great if this could connect, go under the, the flyover, you know, go through the transit location and then continue north to Shiloh Park. This orientation could very much happen along Church. We were just trying to explore different options. At least this is a controlled intersection, and we're trying to make sure that this would be at a controlled intersection, so either way there'd be safety concerns incorporated into the design.
I mean, the one on the bottom goes away, correct? I mean, that's not going to...
Uh, which one? Sorry.
I mean, where the circle, I mean, you wouldn't go through any controlled intersections, you'd be going under a bridge.
Oh, I meant where you're going to cross here at McCrimmon, right here, there would be, but as you go in here, yeah, you're going, as you go under, where you're talking to the McCrimmon.
I thought that was going to be eliminated with the flyover.
You'd still have this road coming over at grade. This flyover, you could go under potentially. Yeah.
Okay. I misunderstood what the DOT was doing then.
Okay. Any, any other thoughts or questions?
The utility of keeping that fly, oh, sorry, the railway intersection.
Okay.
But the flyover, is it, I suppose it is just on pillars, right? And there is space underneath it that we could leverage?
The way, the way it's designed, and this is something that's being visualized, I believe, now, so we'll have this in the next week or two to have a better understanding. Another team is working on that. The way it's designed and the concept that I've seen up to this point, this is an embankment, so it's a graded pitch that comes up, so it's, it's not something that you could see through. It's pretty tight and goes pretty close to the property line of the railroad corridor, so ideally, this would be a discussion that would need to happen, even though it might be too far gone at this point. A discussion would need to be had. Can this be moved back, that embankment, you know, 10, 15, 20 feet, whatever it would take to accommodate this type of trail? So again, if this trail isn't viable here, this trail would, instead of shooting off right here and heading east, it would most likely connect up, and this is your primary crossing at McCrimmon and Church.
So there is no way to influence not using the embankment, but putting pillars so that we can leverage the space underneath it, right? Because otherwise, that small island on this side is...
It's a tough site.
It's meaningless, right?
Yeah. So, we've talked about, that was a comment that came out from one of the developers that we talked to, and it's a good point. I mean, I wouldn't say that there's no way to influence the DOT, NCDOT, but if these concepts are far enough along where they're in their planning phase and they've been funded, it does become more challenging to make that type of change. But those are coordination efforts that we're going to continue to have and show them what we're thinking and show them what the impacts would be to the site, and, and see if that's something that they can take into consideration before this goes to actually being built out.
The plans for the flyover are substantially complete at this point, to the point where we're talking to Town Council about how we're going to clad the bridge and what the bridge is going to look like. So we are pretty far along in terms of asking for any substantial change like that at this point. I think it's highly unlikely.
Yeah. Okay.
And then the question is, is there even a point in worrying about that, or should we abandon? I mean...
Yeah, that's a conversation I would like to have with the DOT and see what the spacing is, because in the concepts that we have, it's not as clear how that area is being set aside, what the space is. Again, I think in the next week and a half, once this other consultant delivers the 3D visualization of this space and shows how this is being treated, we might have, I'll know then, at that point it might be, we need to pivot from this, and it's going to be a primary focus at McCrimmon and Church.
Yeah, I mean, to me, an embankment is much more uglier than, you know...
Yeah.
Having pillars where we can use the space underneath it and decorate it and make it nicer.
Yeah. I don't think anybody disagrees, it's just a factor, we don't have control over that space, so, okay. And some other additional development considerations or redevelopment considerations, a lot of property ownership, could be challenges, can be opportunities, is something that came up when we were talking to developers. The more parcels you have to basically consolidate to do this type of development, the more challenging it can be. So those are just some considerations that we need to keep in mind. You can see on the south side quite a few different property owners. I think some of these, and I know this during some of the conversations that we had in the past, you know, some of these property owners are already working with potential investors or potential buyers, but again, just the property ownership map is something to consider. The two, the BRT route and the commuter rail routes are obviously substantial drivers to this project, so the red line being the potential BRT route, the blue corridor being the potential commuter rail, and then also these potential transit stations. And then the last bit of this is the airport overlay, which I think now would be probably a good time to just touch on that. So with the airport overlay and what we're going to be talking about later in terms of building heights, the main takeaways with that are, up to this point, with the conversations that Town has been having with the RDU, we, we are proposing anywhere on this site in certain areas, up to nine to 12 stories, could go up to 15 stories. In terms of some of the discussions that have been had with RDU up to this point, that's something that would be allowed. Now, that's not 100%. We don't have any of kind of the, the final paperwork. There's some additional drawings that they need to prepare. A lot of this comes down to what the elevation is of the runway, what the elevation is through the TOD, and there's just a calculator for them. They have two different flight paths that they, they have the ascent and the descent flight path. Those are two different elevations that we need to take into consideration. I, I don't know if that's a graphic we'll show today, and I don't know if we have all of the information to the point where we feel that, that certain, but as that information gets solidified with the RDU, we are going to start incorporating that into what our building heights are. At this point, they've set up to 150 feet. That's a number that's been out there, which is, which is fantastic. It's at least a good starting point. It means we're not that far off in terms of what we're visualizing and what we are talking about potentially allowing here. That's a big part of what we want to get your input on tonight. So when we get to the building heights, I, I would say the RDU and their input on what they, you know, we're anticipating seeing, it sounds like we're all sort of moving in the, the same direction.
Just a quick question. I mean, that's going to be a continuing conversation, so when we come back to you next time, we may have more for you on that. Obviously, there's the noise consideration that we talked about before when we were doing McCrimmon. In this case, it's also how low the planes are flying and what the comfort level is with how close you want a building to a plane. So that's some of what we're digging into as well.
Yeah. And I think the main, the main takeaway, based on some of the conversations that Town Staff has had with RDU very recently, you know, in the, in this week, is, you know, we weren't sure if we were going to be limited to five stories, and it sounds like we're a little bit closer to what we're visualizing now in our concepts. So again, to Michelle's point, we'll continue to have those conversations with RDU, we'll make sure that we're all on the same page, but I would say in terms of what we're showing now, it's at least a viable option, so we can keep moving forward. All right, site plan development. So places that were identified by the PCB and Town Council, I won't list all of these, but quite a few different locations were identified. So we did, to the best that we could, try to incorporate what we thought to be sort of the planning principles, the guiding principles for why these spaces were developed, the way they were developed. All of these are developed for different reasons and with different standards, but you start to see some reoccurring themes, and that's what's been incorporated into some of our initial sketch plans. So as we go through this, I think there's some fingerprints from some of the input that we've received in these, in these graphics, so hopefully, hopefully you recognize that. The preferred land use, so this is probably one of the, the main discussions that we want to have. Ooh, let's not do that. In terms of identifying what the preferred land use mix would be in this entire TOD area, and we're trying to be flexible, so this is very much bubble diagram, this isn't, those aren't roads, you know, these white lines aren't where roads need to occur. It's just in general, this is where we anticipate the Yeah, and I think the main the main takeaway, based on some of the conversations that town staff has had with RDU very recently, you know, in the in this week, is, you know, I we weren't sure if we were gonna be limited to five stories. And it sounds like we're a little bit closer to what we're visualizing now in our concepts. So again, to to Michelle's point, we'll continue to have those conversations with RDU. We'll make sure that we're all on the same page. But I would say in terms of what we're showing now, it's at least a viable option. So we can keep moving forward. All right, site plan development. So places that were identified by the PZB and town council, I won't list all of these, but quite a few different locations were identified. So we we did, to the best that we could, try to incorporate what we thought to be sort of the planning principles, the guiding principles for why these spaces were developed, the way they were developed. All of these are developed for different reasons and with different standards. But you start to see some reoccurring themes, and that's what's been incorporated into some of our initial sketch plans. So as we go through this, I I think there's some fingerprints from some of the input that we've received in these in these graphics. So hopefully, hopefully you recognize that. The preferred land use. So this is probably one of the the main discussions that we wanna have. Ooh, let's not do that. In terms of identifying what the preferred land use mix would be in this entire TOD area. And we're trying to be flexible. So this is very much bubble diagram. This isn't, those aren't roads, you know, these white lines aren't where roads need to occur. It's just in general, this is where we anticipate these uses occurring on the site. So as you're further to the west in TOD West, it's high density residential, could be four to five stories. If you start to transition further to, you know, starting to move east, you have five to nine story mixed use development. We define mixed use here in a couple of minutes, so I'll go through that in more detail. And then as you get close to the rail, that's where that transit supportive mixed use steps in. And really, the only difference between mixed use and transit supportive mixed use is height. And the idea here is there's a phasing plan, a phasing approach that we show. It's not the only approach that you would use. It was just an example of, you know, how over time you could build your initial concept. You could come in with phase one and you could, you know, support that maybe with surface lots. But over time, those would get replaced with either redevelopments, you know, taller buildings, might have more decks incorporated into that concept. But again, over time, it's not all at one at one development schedule.
I just wanna quickly go back to the two footprints that you had on the transit hubs. They, you know, certainly different sizes on the potential transit hubs. Why is that? I mean, is is there a view just opportunistic on the space that you have? And, you know, would that actually fill the need going forward? Is that a realistic option?
That's a great, that's a good question. So in terms of what you would need here, this space would run and it would it would take all of this frontage of this red space to accommodate the transit station. This is more of like holding a general location. So it's not, this isn't to scale, to to your point. So I think once we drop this in and you see it in a 3D or you see it in a site plan when we get to the next stage, it's it's not a huge footprint. We're hearing anywhere between 50 to 150 parking spaces needed, all of which could be accommodated in a lot that might serve multiple uses or have like dedicated spaces set aside. But yeah, this was meant to be more of like a generalized location for that space. But yeah, you're you're definitely limited here. That's that's pretty much the only place it could occur. Some of the challenges with this space is if there is a a pass that connects you across your into the sheet's property. So I think that becomes limitations. All of that would have to be on the on the west side of the property, that type of thing. Oh, so then the transit supportive, I I know I said this, but I wanna reiterate, the the main difference between mixed use and transit supportive mixed use is height. So the transit supportive mixed use is where you can start to see these buildings step up in a way that would only be comparable to what we're talking about over on the east side with the office research and innovation. So we're saying that those buildings could be, you know, nine to 12 stories. They could be up to 15 stories. And I'll talk a little bit more about what that means. But basically, we're we're saying at a minimum, we wanna see nine stories here. At a maximum, we wanna see 12 stories. And these are the numbers that we're here to discuss with you tonight. And then they could go up to 15. And, you know, to get those additional three stories, it might be incorporating more sustainable principles or offsetting more space for for public gathering areas or open space. You know, maybe they're doing something more creative with their parking. So there's a lot of different things that you could use as a trigger that would say, if you do this, you can go those extra, you know, three units. Could be more affordable housing incorporated into it, that type of thing. On the south side in this space, that is, it is a challenging space. We see that reflecting similar to what's happening across the street as a commercial, as an outlot. You know, there there's some other options. This could be office space. This could be, you know, flexible. I don't, I don't know that this being residential is a viable solution. It's something that we started to sketch through and it just, it didn't really pencil out. And then even even some of these other properties, you know, if this area were to redevelop inside the TOD, these might be uses right now that are are very specific to supporting the residents here. It wouldn't be, you know, a gas station, or it wouldn't be, you know, something auto centric. It'd have to be something that's a little bit more in line with what we're talking about for mixed use and and high density residential. So, go ahead.
So is there no, I know the reason why they are separated is because you are still considering the road going, the McCrimmon Road going past Churchill Street into that section, right, to the other side? Is is there any willingness to entertain, you know, locking that railway intersection and then extending the mixed use down here all the way up? So in other words, eliminate the road in between.
So eliminate this entire road?
Yeah.
Also, not something that we've had that discussion with NC DOT. We could, we could talk to them about that. I'm I'm thinking this is a release valve right now already with the flyover and how someone's gonna move in through this space coming from Chapel Hill on the south side. Or even if you're coming from the north and you're making a right, trying to come back over into this space. It's something we could explore. My my guess at this point is that's not really on the table, but it would open up this space for redevelopment. There might be opportunities to make this a little bit easier to cross. I think those are other things that we've looked at. Without a controlled intersection, it's it becomes more of a safety concern than anything.
Yeah, I I mean, to me, I still am struggling to understand the benefit of keeping that McCrimmon Parkway whole.
Yeah, and it probably more of like a transportation centric focus. It's not necessarily us saying we want to keep it. It's really just a factor of the DOT is saying it's gonna be there.
It still allows you to turn onto Chapel Hill Road at that location. But if that's not your destination, you can get to the other side of town much easier through the flyover.
Yeah. Yeah, if this was gone and you wanted to get, you know, here and you're coming southbound, you'd have to make a a left, come down and over the flyover, come back to get over here. I mean, it'd be be pretty significant in terms of cutting off access points to this this space. So I still think, I mean, it's hard when you look at it at this scale. This is a large area. So it's not to say that it's lost. It's it's certainly not folded into what you're doing to the south, but you're still have a substantial amount of land in TOD South to to work with. And then crossing Chapel Hill, crossing NC 54. So we're we're over here looking at this space where mixed use, similar to the mixed use over here, five to nine stories. This office research and innovation sort of playing off the other uses that are further to the east and, you know, what's proposed here just to the north. We're looking at nine to 12 stories. This could go up to 15 stories, same thing. To go those additional three floors, there'd need to be, you know, some checks that are made, like they'd need to provide those sustainability options. Or again, how are they gonna handle parking? Or whatever the amenities might be that you wanna see triggered, this is an opportunity to provide that that here. This comes back to, I I think, a comment either from TZB or town council, it might have been both, is to see a skyline. This is, this is some of the opportunity to see that skyline. It's in these buildings that you're gonna get about as tall as you can get while still, you know, not tipping into the RDUs, you know, flight class of flight path concerns. So any, any thoughts or questions about what we're looking at here? Because this really does tee up some of the next discussions.
I think it's still overall dependency on the transit. So all of the buildings that going into high density across the space and mixed density, how much is of that throughput is dependent on actually having the transit set plan? And where do those two things align from a timing perspective?
This this nine to 12, this transit supportive mixed use, 100% is gonna be tied to the successful implementation of of transit components. It could be one or the other, right? Ideally, commuter rail coming through here would drive this to be a more successful and an easier project to build out. BRT could still be supported with this type of development. Now, we're not tying numbers to this. We didn't do a fiscal analysis or a market analysis. This is based on feedback, talking to developers, talking to builders, seeing what they think is reasonable. And even even regardless, if we weren't talking about transit, to build out the space that we're talking about at this scale, it's coming in stages. So residential is gonna drive a lot of this first. So whatever gets built first is gonna have residential, I mean, I know this is what you know, but that's what we're hearing is residential is gonna drive a lot of what's gonna happen first. Incorporating that mixed use, I think, is is important to the town. It's something that we've heard from PZB. It's something we've heard from town council. We've heard from staff. This is a real desire to see that type of mixed use component in this area. So that concept that I show later on, where it's just the the phasing approach, it needs to be residential with a mixed use district, with a mixed use district that could grow and get bigger and could tie into this transit supportive if this if this becomes a reality in the next seven to to 10 years. If it doesn't, you could see this mixed use district just pushing up against the rail. Maybe you don't get the height, you know, you don't get the 12 stories that, you know, we were, we were timing for or hoping for. But you could still get this mixed use area to scale to to kind of fill in the rest of the way to the rail line.
But I guess our risk in this is that if all of this gets built and the transit either doesn't get built or doesn't get materialized or used, we're putting extreme pressure on that roadway. Without any.
On Church and then coming out of McCrimmon. Yes.
And so we're taking, we take a problem that we have now that we know and pushing.
This, and that's that's that balance. And that's why this would happen, this would, this would happen in phases. For this to finally get built out, that transit needs to be a reality. But this is still a strategy for you to build, you know, phase one, phase two. Phase three becomes a challenge if you don't have that transit in place. So how phase three ultimately builds out or four, whatever it ends up being. However, that last component gets built out will be, yeah, to your point, heavily driven by the fact that if the roadway improvements aren't there, if driving patterns haven't changed, that's that's gonna be an issue. That was something a few developers said, and I I'm gonna take that as an optimistic look. Right now, you are, as a as a region, very auto centric. That changes over time in certain communities, or it doesn't. And that's something that you have the, I don't wanna say luxury, but there's an opportunity to sort of wait and see what happens over the next 10 years. You know, regardless of this being a transit station or not, riding patterns, driving patterns can change. They, that's stuff that we have seen in other communities across the country. So again, if you're, if you're building something that's a bit more auto centric, you know, still high density, still mixed use, but does require the parking that you're just traditionally seeing here, that can happen in phase one and phase two. As the market changes, as driver, you know, patterns change, you might have an opportunity to see this built out even without the entire transit system in place. So I think this gives you the flexibility that you're looking for. And it also gives the developer an idea of what you're trying to do, but understanding that they can take this in pieces. That makes sense.
And let me chip in. I don't know if the mic is working, but as far as like staff presenting this to to this board and the town council, I feel like we're we're caught in the chicken or the egg or between a rock and a hard place or whichever metaphor you choose, because we talked to developers who say the transit's not there. We can't do that right now, but we can in the future. And they gave us an example of Charlotte's South End, how it slowly kind of developed into what it is today. And now it's not even a question that these things can be built there. But then we talked to our regional regional transit partners who say, to get funding from the federal government, we need density there. So there's a lot of that balance and and some uncertainty in it. And and that's where Nick and House Levine's kind of developed more of a phasing plan, which at first I was kind of skeptical of. But now, as we look into it and talk to folks, that seems to be like the route that that's gonna have to happen here.
I I think that makes sense. I think, you know, what Sanjay was saying, though, about that roadway, I mean, eliminating that kind of then forces a hand a little bit, because it becomes this parcel that you actually have to walk or use other things. You can't drive through it. So, you know, really does push that envelope a little bit.
I just don't think that's, it doesn't sound like that's an option.
It doesn't, but.
So we need to plan around what's there rather than, I mean, because if we don't move the ball forward, none of this will ever happen.
Yeah.
You know, if we keep doing the same old thing, we're gonna keep getting the same thing. And so.
Right, in the, and and, you know, conceptualizing this, the land use plan at other times and talking with developers, we keep hearing, well, it's a suburban market. It's an automobile based market. But but at some point, if that thinking doesn't change, then it, we never get the transit. But also.
Is that the case 30, 40 years from now?
Maybe Marshall doesn't wanna be the one to jump into it. So I think with the phasing plan, we're taking what could be a very big decision and kind of easing off that pressure at the beginning, at least.
Yeah. And and that that model is proven to work in other regions. So outside of your own, that's something that we're seeing where it's it's not fiscally, I guess, viable right now to say that you have to do a parking deck or podium style structure. But in 15 years, you might need to, like, by by market demand, you need to. And that's supported by this phasing structure. So a surface lot is something that's easy to replace down the line. It's a great pad for future multifamily or future mixed use or whatever, whatever use is appropriate. So that's what we're trying to reflect in this concept. I just, and I, just to put this to maybe to bed today, we're gonna talk to NC DOT. We'll we'll be very clear about, wrong one, we'll be very clear about what our questions are at the at the ViDoc and what what's possible with this road being closed off. And we'll know with certainty whether we can or not. And then we'll come back with a maybe more direct answer to you. Any other questions or thoughts as I I kind of move through this? We're gonna go through this in a little bit more detail, sheet by sheet. I won't read all of this. But this was just to give a sense for when we're talking about commercial, what type of commercial. And then we need to start talking about what uses do we want to come out. So based on what commercial is allowed, we do say it could be shopping centers, grocery stores, restaurants, gas stations, because that's what exists. But that might not be something that we want to allow in the TOD area in the future. So those are, those are discussion points about uses that we can either talk about now, we can talk about when we're here next time. Certainly gonna have that discussion when we move to the to the actual standards and zoning language for this. So again, I think if there's uses in here that are either missing or shouldn't be here, today's a good day to talk about it. If we, you know, if we're not ready to talk about it, we can talk about it next time we're here. But I just wanted to start putting out what we what we think. Like, I think gas stations in the TOD is probably not an appropriate use moving forward. I know one exists now. But moving forward, that might not be the type of use you wanna see here. It also runs sort of counterintuitive to what we just talked about in terms of being auto centric. But these are pretty significant corners. So just just wanted to have that discussion here now. But restaurants, shopping centers, if there's enough space here, you could accommodate a grocery. It may not be a full size grocer. But it's something at like a midsize that you could, you could start to explore. That use could also be incorporated into some of the mixed use pads that we're talking about inside of, you know, these mixed use areas.
And just talking about the size of the grocery store. I wonder, do we really want big box retailer something there?
Yeah.
You don't have room for that, so.
You don't even have room, so it's probably not, but to your, but to your point, yes.
I'm not talking about just that, you know, in general, in that, in this area, our goal would not be to have that, right? It would be more mom and pop shops that, you know, that can serve the community.
Yeah, and there's, there's some, there's mom and pops models. There's more like urban grocery stores that are incorporated into the ground floor buildings that have, I think, have done some amazing kind of looks and styles. It's very transparent and open on the ground floor. So I I would say in terms of the type of grocery store, it's not gonna be the big box style that you see out by the highways. But it would be your, it could be your everyday, you know, goods and services. It could be where you go to shop to pick up prepared meals, that type of thing. So I think that's what's more appropriate in this space. Not not the red space, but a mixed use in general, a commercial space. For the office and and research and innovation component, largely over here, very, very similar to what's happening already to the east. You know, this area should support the local employment opportunities with Morseville. We're looking at a wide variety of of office spaces or flex spaces, whatever those might be. Campus style design, internal pedestrian pathways, landscaping, signage. One of the things that we wanna make sure and we'll we'll be sure to incorporate this, you know, in both in both the office research innovation, but also the high density residential are, you know, not every part of the ground floor has to be service or commercial, but there should be nodes of it, you know, throughout that space. So if you're, if you're looking to redevelop this entire area, there should be some commercial and services at some key intersections or key nodes, a cafe, you know, whatever that might be, just something that occupies the ground floor and and provides a little bit more activity. High density residential, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. This would be where your multifamily primarily gonna be a residential component, very similar to what I just talked about for the office and and research innovation area. There would be pockets of commercial, pockets of service spaces. You know, maybe it's some of the key intersections coming into the space where it intersects with mixed use. I think there'd be a relationship and you'd see a a transition. So it'd feel very similar when you're walking that main street or that main corridor. But, you know, in this, in this more high density residential area, it's gonna be, it's gonna be residential. But with those commercial spaces or or service spaces on the ground floor. And then these these residential, you know, other than the cricket pitch, sort of has a relationship with the residential that's over here to the west, you know, the the three to four story residential that's over here just across the street, North McCrimmon's. And then you have residential to the to the west here as well. One of the things, and we didn't talk about this, we just talked about this. So this would be a little different is down the line, with some of the feedback that's been received from RDU, we said four to five stories. This could be taller. So again, that's stuff that we wanna talk about with you. I mean, right now, there's a four story multifamily building just across the street. So it's not that four to five stories is is significantly taller than what you're already seeing here. So instead of being four to five stories, this could be four to six stories or or four to eight stories, could be five. We do wanna set a minimum. You know, we know we wanna have a certain height in this area. We wanna take advantage of the space. But that maximum, I think, is what's up for discussion. And that was something that we heard and you're, you know, typically, you're gonna hear that from developers is allowing the flexibility to go higher is great. Doesn't mean you're gonna get the max every time. It might just not pencil out, but being able to go to that height is helpful. That's something that we heard a couple of times when we were talking about going to 15 stories. Getting up to about 20 stories in certain areas makes sense. When you get over that, you're starting, once you start getting into high rise development styles, that that can become more expensive and there's almost another step that you need to go. So we're trying, we're trying to stay below that threshold. But it's just something to think about when we say four to five stories. There's a graphic that comes up here pretty soon. We can talk about it maybe in more detail. Mixed use, I feel like I've talked about this a bunch. This, this is the mixed use that we're all thinking of, you know, we're ground floor commercial, ground floor services, really no residential component on the ground floor. So it's gonna be activated. You know, it's gonna feel like that downtown look in in. You know, it's going to feel like that downtown look and style that you're looking for. The uses may be different. This is where a grocery or a small-scale grocer might be appropriate. There might be some entertainment uses. There's a lot of different ways to program this space on the ground floor. But the upper floor, you know, five-to-nine stories, so you're going to have up to four-to-eight stories of residential above. This is where you're going to start to see that height step up. You know, it's intentional that it's away from some of the residential areas to the west. And there's really nothing in terms of what's happening on the east side that we feel is going to have a negative impact when this height starts to ramp up. Transit supportive, this is that, you know, all things coming together the way that we're planning on it or intending it to. This is where you can take that mixed use and really step up right against the rail corridor. You know, we're not hearing that that's going to be a major challenge with RDU at this point. So that's something that we can move forward with. So you could have a building or have buildings here up to 15 stories. Parking, we need to be considered about how it has a relationship with the transit station, how that's being supported. But kind of tying this back to the mixed use that's happening just to the west, this would be part of that kind of phase four, phase three, however the structure's out. This will be one of the last elements that comes in once the rail or the BRT is in place and can support and legitimize the need for that type of height. All right, building heights. So this is a very simplistic bulk standard model. Sometimes I get a little nervous to show this, because obviously we're not building this in its entirety, but it just gives you an idea. It's more of like a floor, an entire plane, right? For that entire area, you can start to see what the scale up would look like. So just to give you a sense of, you know, what we're talking about, and you can see that step-up effect. So you have the four-to-five stories of high-density residential. It's transitioning to this five-to-nine stories. So that lighter is the, you know, you could go to this, but at a base, you're at least at these dark fills. And then that transit supportive, you can see that step up. So you can just kind of picture what these buildings would look like in this space. Certainly going to be incorporating, you know, roadways, so public right-of-way, open space, gathering spaces, a public green. So in some of these spaces, this is going to start carving out, but you'll get a sense of what these heights would be. And then crossing the street, you get that office research and innovation up to nine, nine-to-12 stories, up to 15 if we go that direction. And then just a note, and it's something we'll keep talking about, is multifamily will have first-floor non-residential in some areas and at keynotes. That's really important to make sure that you're not just creating these big residential areas without some kind of service or support, something that they're able to take advantage of.
One question on this.
Yeah.
Do you know what would be the height of the bridge that's going to come up in terms of stories?
Oh, how high this bridge is going to be?
Yeah.
So that was something, again, I know I feel like I'm copping out here, but it's part of this visualization that's going to be shown here in the next two weeks. I'm sure we have that detailed information. That's part of what's getting built into our 3D model too. So I'm going to let Chris, it looks like Chris might be doing some research right now, but.
I'm thinking a number in my head, but I'm not sure if that's the exact number. But it's going to be significantly high, like other flyovers that you see in the area.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so the last that I saw when we did it for the land use plan, it was like 30 feet up.
That's what I was thinking too, yeah.
So about three stories.
Three, yeah, exactly.
We can find those plans and follow up after the meeting too.
No, I was just trying to get the visualization, that is, are our buildings lower than the bridge height? Or, you know, how high, you know, we would go over the bridge so that people can, you know, don't feel blocked.
Yeah, no, it's a good point. And so like this commercial site's going to feel, well, this site here, whatever it ends up being, it's going to be lower than the grade it's coming down. So it's going to start shifting down and it comes back to grade about right here, right where the old McCrimmon Parkway would reconnect. There's a little bit of an upgrade from what I recall. But yeah, no, this would be below, you know, the elevation of the, what is basically.
Yeah, it will, it will look like it's boxed between tall buildings or tall infrastructure.
Yeah, I mean, it could feel that way, unfortunately, yeah. In this space. The rest of this is going to really play off of it. I mean, it's going to step down, it's going to blend in terms of, you know, taller height here, transitioning to the shorter, you know, four-to-five-story buildings to the south and the west.
Just thinking out loud, right? Is there a limitation that it needs to be a lower height? Can it be as high as the bridges?
Could the commercial?
Yeah.
I mean, it could. A three-story commercial site is starting to turn into a mixed-use site. Not, I'm not saying that's not possible. I'd have to really look at how viable, that might be a discussion we would need to have with some builders and developers. How realistic is a mixed-use development sort of wedged into this space? My initial thought, and when we've sketched it out, it just doesn't feel like a viable location for that type of use. But we can certainly look at it and see.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking in denser communities back in India and other places, they do have commercial space that goes, you know, ground floor, first floor, second floor.
Oh, sure, yeah.
And if there is demand for it, then that's the perfect place to have that, you know, scale, right?
I'll just, I mean, and I'm sure we're all aware, second floor, third floor commercial tend to not do so well. There are locations that it works. It's normally a one, two-story, and it's the same use that's using the second floor. But it's just, you know, unfortunately, it's just not how people are wired here to shop or look at. But it's, again, it's something we can explore about what this space could be or how different it could be. I just want to come down, so these are on the shorter side. But in terms of architecture and style, I think this is a more modern look, but it uses some of the traditional materials. So this was a graphic that we had talked about before that had positive response from both PCB and town council. And there's going to be some of these graphics where like, we didn't all love it. And then I have those comments in here, but it was pretty close to, you know, this is the direction we want to go. But we're looking for a bit more height. This is only three stories, so we're looking at four-to-five stories or even taller in our mixed-use areas. This could get a little bit closer to what we're talking about in the transit supportive area. You know, I wouldn't say, don't lock in on the style. I would say I'm not a big fan of the orange balconies myself. But in terms of the step back, you know, what's happening at the street level, I've been in spaces like this, it's very common to what you're seeing in like Vancouver, where a lot of the buildings are very tall. But when you're a pedestrian on the street, you really don't see it. You see these two, three stories, and then there's a step back and the height is happening a little further away. And that's very close to what we're looking at as we get into that mixed-use area, into that transit supportive area up on the TOD west side. And then just where it is appropriate, we're going to have one-or-two-story, very unique commercial spaces. So a couple of spots that were identified, that were talked about in this region, but also in other regions. You know, they're interesting, like a restaurant in the middle or off to the side of a square could be a highly sought-after location. It wouldn't be the norm. There'd probably only be one or two allowed. But these kinds of activated open spaces are what we want to see, you know, throughout the mixed-use area and even in some of the residential, so the high-density residential. You could see this kind of outdoor space or gathering space being appropriate.
And North Hills has a couple.
Yeah, and they're very popular. I mean, I would say almost everyone we talk to mentioned that being a really successful component. Restaurants can drive a space. Certain restaurants can really help kind of build that up. All right. In terms of heights, so we're talking about this commercial, that one space, pretty unique, two-story. But a majority of what we're talking about are these four uses. So this high-density residential, you know, four-story, could go up to five. And I do want to pause here, because this is probably one of the pages that we need the most, maybe guidance from the PCB. Is that enough? Is high-density residential, do we want to cap it at five? Should it go, should it go to six or seven? You know, I think its base is four. That's complementary to what you're seeing across the street. So even because of that, it might want to go taller. But I think we came in a little conservative on the high-density residential. I think in these other uses, we've been pushing it, trying to go higher. But in terms of this high-density residential, you know, what's transitioning on the far west side and the south side? What are the group's thoughts on height?
This is that opportunity, I think, if we set the minimum at four stories to capture that affordable housing. Do the height bonus, is that kind of one of the options that we're exploring here?
You could, yeah, we could. I mean, we could say, you know, if you're incorporating a certain percentage of affordable housing, high-density residential allowances could go, you know, beyond the five-story.
Yep. The problem you're going to have with that is that entirely different type of building.
It can be, you're right.
And if you, because you can do five with commercial down below with a podium would, say it's got to be six or higher, then you've got to have totally different non-combustible construction. So that's probably not going to happen.
Yeah, and that's why if I were going to make.
I mean, I could say go one with four.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
I can't see you going, say, in six to eight, because then it's a concrete or steel building that it's not going to, I wouldn't think it's going to work out economically.
Yeah, and that's a, you allow that to be a choice with the developer, right? You say at a minimum, we want to see five-story, but you could go up to, you know, seven or eight.
Yeah, it's like once you go crazy and propose a whole different thing, I mean, of course, it's entertaining. I'm just, you know, again, as to what is kind of being built and what seems likely to be built. Unless the code changes and allows you to build more than five on top of a concrete podium, I don't see that being super viable in that spot. But maybe somebody could incorporate that into a larger development. I mean, that might make it economically work out, I don't know.
I personally don't mind how tall the buildings are, without any stipulations about who lives there. I think that's up to the developer. But I think if they have a nice plan and they feel that there are enough people to support that type of building, it should be entertained. I mean, I hate to push back and say four or three.
No, I'm not against having it high. I'm just thinking about the reality of construction and what's allowable in a building code. It makes it more difficult.
I agree with what you're saying. I guess the only, if you were to ask me, my recommendation would be we could explore the high-density residential's minimum being five. That is the, that might be the highest you would be able to go in terms of more modern building practices now. You go into six, seven, or eight, it's going to be a bit more, it's just going to be more costly, so.
Yeah, but that's a, that's a, as Chris just pointed out, you know, that's a developer's choice, right? If they are willing to, if they see a market for it, you know, they could go up. Right, and gives us an opportunity to influence affordable housing in some shape or form.
Yep.
I look at it the opposite. I look at it as more penthouse space. So the one with the orange balconies, the first one over the restaurants, those big areas are the penthouses. So instead of putting them on top, they're big patios. And that's very popular, people coming from the city. They want that first level overlooking the streets. So it's not necessarily taller, has to necessarily get cheaper. It could also be, don't buy a house. I want to have large square footage and I want to raise two or three kids in apartment living. I mean, that's what city people do. We're not restricted to, once my family starts to grow up, I move by a house. We want people to continue to live there and age out in that community.
Agreed.
And can I ask, I just heard some mixed comments about the incentives versus just having a minimum-maximum. Is there any other feedback on that, just for my notes?
And if it works out economically, I mean, it would be a good way to potentially, if you wanted to try to push some affordable housing, I mean, having that carrot rather than the stick would probably be more successful. And obviously, we're thinking about multiple different things here, some of which might also have residential too. And, you know, right now, we're just talking about this one thing, which is almost the introduction to that area. So that.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, but if we go, if we go, let's say, seven feet, seven stories on high density, you could increase from five-to-nine mixed use, go make it even taller. So in other words, right now, it seems like you have got the elevation, that angle of elevation can change.
I would, my recommendation is high-density, I would start at five and you could go to seven. But mixed use, I would still start at five.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm not, all I'm saying is it can go taller.
But you could go taller, correct, yeah. I mean, I'm going to quote a developer, I won't say who said it, I just thought it was funny. You can make 40 stories, I mean, you can say whatever you want is the maximum. The minimum is the first.
That's what's the mindset.
Exactly. So I think the important thing is, and maybe I might not have asked that question correctly. Let me restate that. If someone came in and had a four-story building, would we feel like that was a missed opportunity? Because that was the minimum and they built the minimum. Should the minimum be five? And that's the question. The maximum, I think we have a little bit more flexibility, and it's unrealistic to assume that you'll get all of the maximums to play out. It's just, that's, it just won't pencil. But you could certainly start the discussion by saying, well, at a minimum, we want to make sure that in our high-density residential, it should be five stories. And I think that's a reasonable ask. And then whatever happens after that, I think we can have a bit more flexibility.
I think it would be helpful in some of your other drawings if you were to show the four-story existing building on the other side of McCrimmon that's just outside of the space.
Yeah, I do. And so when we do these 3D visualizations of it, I do think that'll help. I drove it a couple of times today and it's just, honestly, what's driving part of this decision for me is having driven by that and some four stories, I'm like, what a miss. I mean, we should probably be asking for more.
So one more just thought. Is there, on the, I know it's residential, but just thinking out loud, can the top story be also served like, you know, rooftop restaurant or rooftop something? I know it's on the mixed use, you probably have that, but.
That's a good, it's a good question. I mean, yes, it could.
Or it could serve as, you know, some kind of a gardening area or playground area for kids.
I guess it would be smart to not, we wouldn't want to write this to where that would.
Wouldn't allow, I wouldn't, exactly. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that it would be by right. I would think it's something that someone could explore. And that could be one of the incentives for, you know, getting the extra floor. You're doing something very creative with the upper floor. I think, and you basically said that, I think the best way to go about this when we get into zoning is you want to allow people to be creative. You don't want to discourage someone or prohibit someone from going that route. So certainly something we could explore. I think as a policy, it should be in our document here. And then, and I don't want to put Jackie in a box, but essentially, if she could find a way to be creative in the zoning language where you can be that kind of flexible, I think that's to both advantages. So that's, a developer comes in, has got a really good idea, and it's the town saying, this is what we think we would like to see. Okay. The next one is the mixed-use building. So as I said, I think five-story as the minimum is the appropriate height for the mixed-use area. But going up to nine stories, I mean, again, what's a number that you think the community or, you know, town council could be uncomfortable going? I think nine was where we sort of came from, just kind of benchmarking this with other projects. I don't know if there was any thought from this group.
So, sorry, I'm.
It's okay.
We talked about high-density being minimum of five. Then shouldn't the mixed use go up to six or seven as minimum?
It doesn't, you don't have to.
I agree, we don't have to.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, ideally, if you want, ideally, it would make more sense to have additional space in mixed density. This way, you are accommodating for the additional housing of that one.
I think we'll have a lot of vacancies. Just from consistency around what we have now, where we have a little bit denser areas, we see a lot of vacancies. So you can say, I want to have this busy atmosphere of all of these shops and places, but you just don't have people using that, they shop online. So I'm fine going with the lower end of the.
I think, yeah, going back to constructability, again, how many nine-story buildings do you see?
Right, right, so.
That is in a real weird spot.
Well, yeah, but that's why.
Cost per square foot.
That's why I was asking, you know, should we have, make that minimum from five-story to seven-story or six-story? I don't know what's the difference.
There's a threshold that you cross when you're at about that four-to-five-story height, when you go into a different type of construction for a building. And that's where that cost comes in, so.
You have to start like pumping, you have to have water pumps. There's a lot of things, when you get above six to seven floors, there's different sort of things, but there's a huge thing at, you know, at a podium with five floors above it. So I mean, of course, on the other hand, I think this mixed use is probably going to gravitate down to the lower end of that. I don't think you're going to see many people do a nine-story building.
I think you're, I think that's.
Now, maybe it's a situation where you could trade off. Maybe you have one part of it, of this development that's taller, and then we would give you the lower side over here.
Yeah.
And that would help with the variation of things. I mean, I don't know what kind of feedback you have from developers, unless things have changed from the last, I sort of looked at these kind of things. I mean, that just is a tough spot to do. I mean, you'd see it some, but just not very often, especially in a suburban-type setting, not in a city. I mean, you'd see it some, but just not very often, especially in a suburban-type setting, not in a city.
It also depends on, so we show a lot of different mixed-use areas. Not all of that mixed use is getting built out in your phase one or phase two. In phase three, there could be taller mixed use, cause there's a larger demand for it, there's something that's supporting it, you already have a big residential user base. So there's, there's other factors that might come in where in the first round, you might only get five, six-story mixed use. In the, you know, fourth or fifth round, when this is still out there, that could be when the nine-story comes in, because the market has changed. But yeah, I mean, to the, to be realistic upfront, I would start this at, at five. And that's the other thing, if someone comes in and says, we can only make this project work, cause it's ten stories, that's something you have the flexibility to make that decision, so.
Um, we're about an hour in and we have about fifty more slides left, just to know.
The height, the height was the big one, yeah.
Agreed, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, I guess in, in reality, this is really more of a, you're showing us where you're at. I mean, I know you want feedback, but yeah, we've probably.
Yeah, I honestly, of all the things, cause when we go through the sketch plans, I feel pretty locked in about what we wanna move forward on, unless this group feels very differently. It's the height that was probably the biggest discussion point. All right, and then, so same thing, transit supportive, again, that, that becomes realistic, that height becomes realistic when it's a transit supportive solution. So in the meantime, if, if for whatever reason, that's not the approach that we can go, that area probably flips back to the mixed-use model and that's what we'd get built there. If, if that's where this goes in, you know, fifteen years, whatever it might be. And then the last one was the office research and innovations, we had nine to twelve stories, up to fifteen. This is what's on the east side of NC 54. So again, not that there's anything of that height in that area, but you could see that step up, that transition and it's appropriate. And again, it's also in line with what we're hearing so far from the RDU. Uh, road types, all right, so I'm, my, my caveat here is, so there's images that I'm gonna show that are, are what we've talked about in previous meetings and where there was positive feedback, you know, showing decorative intersections, you know, a lot of improvements in terms of what bump outs would look like, you know, very, very visible crosswalks, that type of thing. And then just these pedestrian and bicycle connections all throughout. That's driving a big part of how we're defining these roads. I know this, this is probably of the graphics that we're showing can be a little too sketchy or conceptual, but before we go too far, we're just trying to show program of the streets. So what we're looking at here is, you know, there's this boulevard that enters into the site. So this might have, you know, a landscaped median, the roadway infrastructure, probably not on-street parking, this is really your entrance into the location. What are, your more traditional streets are these red lines, that's your kind of main street into the community, into this, this little district. It's always gonna be fronting these mixed-use buildings. So where there's a mixed-use building, that's where that main street roadway type is most appropriate. And then these major and minors will just be complementary roadway types to the main street. So it'll all feel like a connected roadway network, that it was all designed and planned. They'll just be kind of stepping back in terms of level of detail of landscape features or streetscape features or sidewalk widths, that type of thing. But all of this would be interconnected for sure. This is just one of our concepts that we're gonna talk about a little bit later. The other one was just what these, these roadway types start to look like. And my caveat here is, this is something that we're gonna continue to work with town staff on. We've, we've kind of gone back and forth about what the structure of these would be. You know, big, big discussions we need to have are, what are the right-of-way widths? Should, should they be eighty feet, should they be ninety-nine feet? Do they wanna be bigger, do they wanna be smaller? So we're looking at traditional right-of-way widths and then building in the infrastructure that's appropriate. I know these are, are tough to read. Not really meant to break down these numbers yet, these are all pretty typical numbers. But you know, you have a wider, a wide sidewalk here, you have a bike lane that's divided by a parking lane, a drive aisle, a landscaped median. You know, this could be a, a turn lane down the way, but also a, a drive aisle, and then it's kind of the flip, uh, on the flip side. This boulevard's showing more of like transit components, so it could be bus stops, dedicated bus route, bus lane, that could be shared space. So there's a lot of different solutions for what these, these streets want to look like. So we're just starting to work through this with, with town staff and we'll be sure that the next concepts that come to you, the visualizations, will incorporate what town feels very comfortable, what town staff feels very comfortable with, you know, moving forward. Cause this is, this is part of the area where these roads could be flipped back to the town and the town's gonna be responsible for them. So they should, they should have a say in what those, those roadway dimensions and amenities are.
If you could just slide up to that, the, the roadway one, you need to have spaces for the, the residents to gather and have their, you know, celebrations or whatever they want to do. But that seems to be, is that enough for that entire area?
No, yeah, no, not at all. So this, this mixed-use or high-density residential, and I'm gonna jump down just cause I think this can be a tricky discussion. You know, this is that big open space we're talking about, but there's still gonna be pockets of opportunities off the main road. So you're not gonna just have these big solid buildings. I'm gonna show this graphic and I know it, it sort of does a disservice, cause we put them in here, but when you see like that visualization, this building's not gonna be the entire block. That's a bulk standard, it's just to show what the height could be. But we're gonna carve this up, there might be parking here, there could be open space pockets. So yeah, you're right, I mean, this is your big open space, but there's gonna be little open spaces throughout the site, that's really important. You gotta have places where people can gather outside of just your main square. So I don't wanna spend a lot of time on the roads, I just, we're, we're working through this, so when you see the roadway, basically the site plans, the sketch plans we're gonna go to, they break it out into two realms. There's the public realm, which is the public right-of-way, which is this space. And there's the private realm, which is, you know, basically where these buildings are gonna be developed. And even though there'll be gathering spaces and open spaces, it's in that private realm space. But these are in your packet, so if you go through this, if there's something that you just feel very strongly against, how about let us know? That, that would be very helpful, but know that these are, these are kind of evolving as we work with staff. All right, initial sketch plans. So for now, we've prepared three different sketch plans. And then in working with town staff and kind of working with our staff internally and talking to developers, we've really gravitated toward this preferred concept. These other options, and I, this is what's important, regardless of what concept plan we ultimately visuals, visualize for the, the redevelopment plan, any one of these would be a viable solution. So that, I guess, I say that because that's, that's really the intent of this entire project. It's not to dictate exactly where buildings are gonna be and where roads are gonna be in the future and, and what they're gonna look like. It's to say that if we can establish a policy, a, a visualization that we were, were working towards and write regulations that kind of align with it, this is what you could see. Any one of these would be appropriate and any one of these site plans, even though they're all very different, would work. So that, that's an important distinction that we're trying to make with this, this overall process. The preferred one, you know, just going back to some of the big themes that we'd heard about, you know, big open space in the middle, you know, some kind of activated, maybe a restaurant or a cafe, whatever it might be. This could be an opportunity for a band shelter or a big public open gathering area, something that might be covered. It could be a, a secondary farmer's market, doesn't have to be the farmer's market, but you could do some other kind of event space, whatever it might be. Again, this open space was something that was, was very popular. And then getting in more to the localized area in the public realm, outdoor dining, outdoor seating areas, that type of thing. So these, these are some of the, I, I guess, graphics for both the streetscape, but also for the, the public realm that we're looking at. So for the preferred sketch plan, we wanna start working on establishing a grid in this space. So what you're starting to see are all these different block, I mean, these are, these are street blocks. So I think that's what's an important consideration here, is we're, we're up to about twelve street blocks and that's not even breaking up some of the transit supportive mixed use. You're gonna have somewhere between ten to fifteen blocks in this area, so that's how much space you have to work with. And then within each one of those blocks, you're gonna have parking, you're gonna have buildings, you're gonna have landscaping, gathering spaces. That's what our next exercise is, is once we have this preferred concept plan and we're all on the same page, we're gonna start to break these down and visualize what that space could look like. Same thing, you know, trying to mimic what's happening on the north side. And what we were talking about more recently is maybe this high-density residential gets a little bit taller. So where we're showing, you know, four to five stories now, maybe five to six stories here, maybe this is where it steps up, cause it's a part of a later phase, those are things that we can explore. But similar kind of open space, more pocket open spaces or dedicated spaces throughout. Any comments about the preferred concept or the direction that we're going?
I like the preferred. I looked at the other ones, because it's a block and when people park their car for mass transit, they need to quickly be able to visualize, where do I need to go? So for me, the grid pattern was nice. And the only thing I would say about the open space, whether it's an open space or a rooftop, you need a dog park desperately in there. Every one of those green spaces are gonna be dog parks. So that, you know, if you have, especially on the east, if you have, probably ninety percent of the people here have dogs, you could have eight hundred dogs in that little community. They have to have a place to go preferably inside their building, so they're not all over the sidewalks, all over the grass. So any chance of having a daycare or something like that close to a grass where they would go out and play, those immediately go away if the dogs are using any of the grass areas.
Okay, and you have the space to identify and potentially set that aside. I mean, if you're gonna do a dog park, it comes, there's some specs that come with that, that you gotta adhere to.
It should otherwise, a community to have high-rises with all those dogs.
That's, no.
Yeah, it's a good point.
They can do inside ones now and rooftop ones.
Yep.
That needs to be designed in, because people will move out very quickly if they're eating outside and there's ten dogs doing their business.
You're right. Yeah, and then just some of the inspiration for this, I know, you know, we talked about North Hills, we've talked about, this is in Dublin, Ohio, I might have mentioned this project before, it's fantastic. They did a really good job of incorporating mixed-use development with, you know, down the line, they've been building out these, these decks to support it, they started with some surface.
I like the connection between buildings on top there.
Yeah, it's really interesting, cause it's, it's, there's quite a bit of them. I mean, there's, there's several of them along this road, so I, I think that's a nice touch.
Yeah, I think you have to consider the difference in the climate and I think that's a thing that's known to kill your activation on the street, so I.
I agree, I agree.
Well, so the reason they do this, I didn't, I didn't know this. It's not so much climate, it's because they wanted protected covering connection to the deck. So I didn't, I didn't know that.
From what?
So.
Weather.
A lot of ti-, well, so a lot of times, the, the challenge is people wanna direct like indoor connection to their space, regardless of weather. But that is why they did this, it's not just cause of the, the, the snow, but I'm sure that's a factor. And then this, I know I, I had mentioned before, it's just a very generic 3D model, it is not, you know, this isn't what I'm gonna deliver in the next draft. It's just to give you an idea of where generally this is going and what this space and height could start to look like. So we talked about this. And then sketch plan option number one, I won't go into these in much detail, I just, we wanted to show some different options, you know, a different, bigger turnaround or roundabout in this space. And then this was, this was very similar to some other models that were identified to us or locations that people like. I, I really like this, but it feels a bit, it can be a bit forced and then you have some awkward space out over here.
It's almost more traditional office, like.
Yeah.
So I, I don't, I don't wanna stop you, but going back, so do we have any connection to McCrimmon?
Right here?
The upper, from the north, from the.
So we have, this is a connection point to McCrimmon.
From the other, upper one there. The new McCrimmon Road, do we have any connection at all?
Connect to here to here, so I don't believe we're able to connect to it, I believe.
We don't have a connection under the road, we don't have a connection here.
You're coming off of church.
So we've created a complete island into itself with no connection to the rest of this property.
Yeah, and by, I mean, by we, this is really the land that's been left, based on the, yeah, McCrimmon, McCrimmon flyover.
Saying this whole upper section has no communication to any of the other sections.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, I mean, this is, this is a substantial edge, the, the flyover. I know we had this challenge when we were doing TOD East.
I mean, not even a pedestrian connection, I mean, like, we literally have nothing, except a hump of.
As it's, as it's designed now, no. You know, questions, can you, can you build a tunnel under it? I mean, there's a lot of questions that we have for it and this is where the answers to this, these questions so far have been no.
I'll just ship in, those DOT plans were in the making long before we had.
Yeah.
But it doesn't change the fact that it is a huge miss.
It does not. Yeah, yeah, I wish we could undo, but we can't, I'm sorry. But so these were some of the inspiration part side. I think this is the one that most drove this discussion of.
That's where that radial thing came from.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It's, it's, it's really nice, I, I think this graphic does a dis-, I, it's, it's a nice graphic, cause it's very simplistic. But when you see it in 3D like this, it's a cool, it's a neat space, I really like the way they handled the blocks and the cut-throughs, it's, it's nice. And then just, just a generic model of what some of these, these entry points would look like, so. All right, and then option three, same thing, just trying to create some unique spaces. So this is very similar, where you might have that two, two-story commercial restaurant that has a really interesting, you know, severed block look, and then you're off the open space, you could do, you could do some interesting stuff with this. This is very traditional. This looks a lot like this. I, 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 what I liked about this model, and this inspired what we're gonna talk about a little bit later here, is you can see the transition, there's a lot of surface parking, which, you know, we're, we're not in love with and it's not the only thing we wanna see, but you can see over time how this could get phased out or staged based on how other developments would occur. So you know, maybe this is phase one and then had a lot of service lots and then you're just repeatedly building on top of those old pads. So it's just an option to explore. That's just a generic model, okay. And then just, real quick, I, I feel like I've talked about this a lot, but just to, to kind of walk through, so this is your, your phasing strategy. So you have phase, phase one, you know, you're leaving some of these pads open, you have an entry point in. You know, potentially residential could be here and part of phase one, but just as a, as an example, you're building out this mixed use, it's serviced by these, these surface lots. You know, phase, phase two comes in, it's more residential, because there's a demand for it. You know, but phase three, and this could be three and four, it really depends, is when you're starting to take over some of these service lots, this is a little bit easier when it's the PowerPoint bit. You can see like, this was a service lot, now it's a deck that supports both of these spaces. You know, this was a service lot, these buildings are starting to step up, so these were the smaller end of the mixed use, these are the taller end of the mixed use. So it just shows over time how mixed use, by how we're allowing it, could, could ramp up, could go from five to nine.
Was that set or is that opportunistic? So if we look at a phase one as sort of the mixed-use buildup, is, is, if somebody came in and said, hey, we wanna do residential right away, that's.
Yeah, um, like I said, and, and I agree, the, the resounding feedback from developers and, and just other, other people that I've worked with, like architects, residential is, is most likely gonna drive the first phase. But, but it's very important that we're saying that there needs to be a commercial component to that and some mixed use would be ideal. So that's why when we look at those different lane use programs that we've identified, the phase one might be on the far west side, potentially. Ideally, you would wanna talk to a developer and say, we want you to take a chunk of that residential, the high-density residential, and also do a chunk of this mixed use. This is more of like an ideal, from a town's perspective, an ideal build-out of phase one, where it's part of the high-density residential and part of the mixed use. But to your point, if someone came in and said, I, I really wanna do the high-density residential here, I'm gonna have a little bit of commercial component on the ground floor, I, I don't think you're saying no to that, you're just, you're gonna wanna maybe reevaluate what the next two phases look like, that would be it.
So, and, and not to get off topic, I do wanna ask, the question I've asked before is, how does this stage with social services, right? So if you start building out, and, and I like the idea of mixed-used real estate in the beginning, right? So it's more of the driving to go shop and go do, and that makes sense. If it turns a corner like you think it would to more build-out of residential, high-density residential, how do we provide services? Is that staged that we have ability to provide schools and cer-, and services for the folks that are gonna come in that? Or are we in a bind in that situation?
Yeah, so that's, some of that's out of, out of the town's direct control. I mean, when you're starting to talk about how the, the school system.
Run for school board.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's a real problem, I mean, I think this is the situation, so we, we can wanna, you know, build and hope kind of strategy where it's like, you know, if that's locked down, I think that makes a lot of sense. But if, you know, we, we set this plan and then folks come in and we approve wildly, we're gonna, we already have an issue, so we'd be big in a hole.
Yeah, maybe, what I would offer is a solution, I mean, it's, it's somewhat out of our scope in terms of what we've been asked to do, but you could do a service area plan and an impact plan. So what, what would this look like if it developed out three different ways? This is just one, this isn't even the strategy, this was more of like an, an example of what could happen. But you could, you could prepare three or four different development strategies about how this would build out and then you, you should start socializing those with your, your services, your service providers. You know, how, how would the school district be aware of this without this plan being provided to them? I, I would think this would be something you'd wanna show them and say, you know, we, we anticipate this amount of multifamily, so we anticipate, you know, this many residents coming in. We're anticipating this much commercial, so you should talk to your service providers on that side. You know, water consumption, whatever it might be, and, and some of that's you and some of that's your providers, so you gotta talk to them. This plan will start to report numbers, so that would be a good starting point. If you're asking that this plan respond to what is currently provided and what could be provided, that's a bit trickier, cause we don't, I don't, we don't know. I mean, I don't know what their future needs and, and what their future supply might be, but. I get what you're saying, and it was a real challenge during the lane use plan, we didn't know where the schools were gonna go. You know, where, where might a future school go? And without knowing that location, how much residential could you truly talk about, but.
I mean, if the last fifty years have taught us anything, is that regardless of what we do, the schools are not going to be proactive about building schools.
We know what we're planning for this, we just, we're.
What I'm saying is, it doesn't matter, if you did load this in your residential, they still would not plan and they still would not have schools built ahead of time for those things, because the economics is not there. So I, I mean, you know, if we wanna continue more of the same, then that's, we could do that and we still would not have schools that were ready and ready to go. Cause those things are always a lagging thing, that's just, unless people are willing to pay fifty million dollars for a school ahead of time, it's just almost impossible to do that, you know?
Yeah. And these are some of the other design considerations that'll get incorporated into our next steps, so I won't, I won't go through all these. But basically, this is what, what makes good design. The last thing I wanted to talk about was the developer feedback, and I feel like I've kind of peppered this in as we've gone through. And I want. And I want to say, you know, this is the generalization of what we've heard from them. I would say overall, though, positive feedback. You know, I think people are really excited about the direction that the town is moving with this TOD area and, you know, the, the density that we're talking about, the height that we're talking about, maybe some of the creative solutions. So I think there was, there was generally some positive feedback through these discussions. Also some just really good feedback in terms of what's been successful in other places, what some of the pitfalls have been. So overall, the, the comments that came out of this were environmental concerns alone are not deterrents to redevelopment.
So this is in regards to the brownfields?
Exactly. So it's, it's not to say it's not a factor, but it's not the determining factor. It wouldn't shut somebody down or they wouldn't move forward. There's some, there's some things to explore. The numbers that were thrown out for potential remediation, I'm not going to say them because they're anecdotal, but the range was so significant. If it's on the lower end, it's really a nominal cost, and it's, it's kind of a part of doing businesses. Certainly if you're in the, the business of large-scale redevelopment in urban areas. So if that's the case, many developers are accustomed to that. If it's on the higher end, I mean, it's just, it's another challenge. Some of the, the issues would be, you know, is the land, is purchasing the land too expensive because you already have to do the remediation on top of it? So I think that's the give and take. So that was feedback that we received. Parcel consolidation, multiple owners of the TOD area in phases. It wasn't so much a concern, it was just comments that people made like, wow, a lot of different parcels to work with here. That can be a challenge. If, if property owners are looking to sell, and it's kind of timing out with the different phases that we're looking at, not as much of an issue. But it was just something that a few developers had mentioned. And then a phased approach. We, we started with a more generic version of our phased approach, but as we were talking to them, like staging the projects was, was important. And phase one, multifamily with commercial nodes was resoundingly a comment that we heard. Like multifamily is going to lead, there can be commercial and service uses incorporated, but there needs to be a substantial lift on the multifamily side to get this, this project sort of kickstarted. Phase two, mixed use. Phase three might be multifamily infill, more mixed use. Hotel and office, a couple of different developers talked about how that's a real viable use here and would be interesting to see incorporated, and then so on. And then the last part were the potential incentives for additional height. We touched on a couple, but affordable housing, so permanent 80%, 60%, 40% or lower. There's a lot of different ways that we could start to incorporate affordable housing into these different developments. Provision for sustainable development options, provision for high-quality plazas, covered outdoor dining areas, rooftop or skyline dining. So some of the uses that you'd already started to talk about. You know, if you want to go higher, we want that last floor to be this. And those are things that you could start to drive the discussion with. Those are some of the developer feedbacks. Real quick, next steps. So we've been working on these, these typology approaches. We're here tonight doing the PZB working session. A very similar conversation in March with town council. I believe the date is the 28th. Town council is on 28th, yeah. So we'll be back here talking to town council on the 28th. Next steps internally for our team is initial 3D massing model. So to your point, we're going to build this up. We're going to build the context so you get a better sense of what's going on around the property. I think that'll help a lot. And then starting to move into March, we'll be working on the 3D massing model, some more detail. So we'll do an initial, make sure it's looking good. Then we'll start to actually do the 3D model based on that preferred sketch plan. In the meantime, we're going to coordinate with the transit providers and NC DOT. We'll, we'll close the door on some of these discussions or see if one of the doors are still open. So we'll let you know. And then we have another round of developer listening sessions. They weren't scoped, but they've been really helpful. So we're just going to continue to talk to developers. I think their feedback is important, and we'll, I think some of these calls are already set up. And then in April is the final TOD redevelopment plan. The second part of that is, I just wanted you to see where we're going. So we're taking this preferred concept, and very similar to what we did for TOD East, we'll do a program like this, maybe not as detailed, but it'll be a program like this, and it'll, it'll end with this 3D visualization. So this is ultimately what we're coming back with when we want to visualize this area. And then with a series of supporting diagrams or visualizations, that Jackie's team will have to start folding into the zoning side of this. So how do we regulate some of this? Not all of it, but how do we regulate the stuff that we think is important? And then that, that, this will be Jackie's charge. So moving into the TOD zoning district standards, I won't read all of this, but we're, you know, into May when we're getting the TOD district standards, all of this is wrapped up September, October. So we'll be back having discussions with this group a few more times before it's all done. So this was really just a preview of where we're at. So I came in right on, right on time, right, Chris?
I did have one question.
Sure.
Given that now the TOD West, right, is, is, now has to come all the way on Church Street, is there, is there, would there be plans to expand Church Street from the single lanes we have today?
So that's, I mean, I can't say that there, there are plans for it, but I do think it's something that's going to need to be explored. Similar like the discussion we had for the, the town center with Church Street. You know, for the town center to be as successful as it wants to be, that's, that's a release valve street. So certainly going to be some challenges with it being the current roadway width that it is.
Yeah, it's, it's not shown in the transportation plan as being widened to a four-lane such as McCrimmon, but the transportation, transportation plan is going to be evaluated in maybe two years or three years. I'm not sure of the cycle. But no, not right now. It's only going to remain two lanes. Of course, every development is going to have to do, not everyone, but most of them are going to have to do a TIA, review the transportation impacts, and at that point, different turn lanes, other safety improvements will come online.
Anyone else? So do we have anyone? We had one other person who had signed up. Anyone else has any comments? If you would just go up there briefly, please keep them to three minutes or less. Okay, well, then that's, that's even better. Yeah, I don't know if you'd signed in or not. Okay. Yeah, perfect, yeah.
First off, Nick, great work. Congrats, a lot of work went into it. My name's TJ Sylvie, working on local development in the area, including project that I think a lot of people in the town are familiar with, that 401 Southport Drive, which is going to be a life science facility right here in Mooresville, driving a lot of jobs we're very excited about. Also going to be working on TOD West. And so a lot of these comments, you know, hit close to home, things that we're focusing on day to day as we advance that project. And I'd say really two things come to mind when looking at what's being proposed here. And it's more so just things for everybody to consider as plans get more and more finalized. I understand right now some things are still in flux, but it's certain things that were echoed by some of you, and I just wanted to reiterate. One thing being access on McCrimmon. You know, if, if at any point in time underneath the flyover, you know, that roadway is closed and there's no access, for any of the retail that's going to be required in the mixed-use portions or in any portion of the project, if it's not visible and people can't access it, it'd just be very, very hard to keep that space occupied. You know, retailers, you know, first and foremost, they want to be seen. They want people to be able to get there easily. And so the flyover itself right now creates some challenges with that. Not, not insurmountable challenges, but just things to be considered to make the development viable. And then second being, to your point about building materials and the densities required here, you know, I think it, it may be worthwhile to have an economic discussion and just do some compare and contrast of, you know, depending on, you know, where heights are set, what that might require, and therefore, you know, what might be viable vis-à-vis land values. And, you know, ultimately, you know, the, the great environment that you guys are hoping to create. And that'd be something that we'd be happy to be as open and transparent as possible about to ultimately, I think, you know, have an aligned vision about what this great, great pocket can be. So, great work. It's a very exciting project that we're, you know, thrilled to be embarking on. And so just a couple of things to consider to optimize things as we go.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Do we have anyone else? I guess that is it. So I guess we can move on to staff comments.
Sure, and I'll just say, as you guys continue to think through this, if you have any additional feedback that could help with the next phase of visualization and text amendments, continue to keep in touch with Planning Manager Lawson. He'll keep in touch with Nick. And then we'll continue to build.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
And be back to you in a few months with the next phase. So just a touch on the newsletter, and before I dive into that, just because it is closely related to the TOD that you've been talking about. If you are not aware, the public engagement for the commuter rail study is currently open. A couple of you did attend an open house in this room on Monday night that Go Triangle sponsored to talk a little bit about the plans for rail and the survey that's now open. But, you know, important for the town, so if you have not yet taken advantage of that opportunity to weigh in, the main question that they're asking is funding and phasing, and which segment would occur first? So I think it's probably pretty obvious when you look at it which segments benefit Mooresville the most. But just reminder that that is out there and encourage all of you to weigh in and provide input. Going on to the planning newsletter, touch base on some of the activity that's been going on December and January, because we canceled the January meeting. Did get in a site plan review for a place of worship on Mooresville Comfort Road. That was the Habad of Keri, wish they'd changed the name, but I think most of you probably recall that when they came for rezoning a while back, actually. But they are now in with their formal plans. Town council is considering, or continuing to discuss affordable housing. We had the next session with them scheduled for March 2nd. It looks like that may need to be pushed off a little bit. So if you have any questions about that, let me know, and I could get, get you the new date once that's set. But they're going to be talking through those implementation options in more detail. And then town council approvals. The annexation of the Discovery at Watkins, which is the Longfellow parcel on TOD East, that was approved. And the development agreement for Odyssey Lane was approved. And then we had no new site plans submitted in December or January. So that's kind of the planning newsletter. I believe Town Manager Paige may have wanted to weigh in on something as well.
I've communicated with Chair Langston last week. We have an advisory, appointed public bodies advisory committee policy that we've established that helps manage how our advisory committees work. Planning and zoning board is included in there, but in a very defined, restrictive way outlined in the UDO. But one of the things that council added to that policy several years ago was opportunities to periodically meet with the committees in some kind of joint meeting or ways to interact and engage. So I've sent that communication out to all of the other advisory committees to talk about how they might want to do that, they might, when they want to do it, how they want to consider doing it, if they don't want to do it. And all of them are sort of discussing that in February and March at their committee meetings. Wanted to offer the same opportunity to PZB. You're different. You directly engage with council a little bit different. But I will tell you, council expressed interest in a joint meeting. It always becomes a challenging thing, but I really just sort of wanted to broach the subject with you to see if you're interested, talk about it to this meeting, next meeting, think about it, how you might want to explore that, and, and then we'd be happy to facilitate. And we're also happy to answer any questions.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess now is time for board comments, so, I mean, I guess we can, what is the general thought about that? I think it would be a good thing, I mean.
And we have, we have always asked for, you know, engagement, and it would be good to share thoughts with, with the council. I don't know if they are willing to do it in an open forum or a closed forum.
Well, it would have to be, it would have to be an open forum if we all met. There's no kidding around the open forum.
I think we would, we would need topics. Then we would have to come to some agreement of what it is you want to discuss so that we're not just.
Of course, and then we would need to, because we want to respect everyone's comment. But I mean, I think, it sounds like, yes, Mark.
It is interesting.
We're just trying to figure out if there's a desire to do it right now. It sounds like there is, right?
It would definitely be open.
Yeah.
So I, I guess we can, you know, get the council's input and we can, yeah, and see how they want to go forward.
I mean. Yeah, we, we sometimes have work sessions.
No more in the past, so.
Yeah, we, we sometimes have work sessions as a part of our council meetings. That might be an opportunity. Of course, it, it brings you to them and, and happy to try to coordinate the other way. But that might be an easy, quick way to do it. It's usually at the end of a meeting. I think the idea about what topics you want to discuss is great. You could ask for that from council as well. They want, it's not you go to them, it's, it's a collaborative discussion they're seeking.
Any other comments?
Really enjoyed the detailed presentation.
Yes, thanks for the presentation, Nick.